Let's start with the judge, please. The judge pleads his pardon.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Yeah.
Trusty McFetrich.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrick.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the village board meeting, December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, additions, deletions, changes on the minutes?
A slight, I don't know, you probably took it out of the minutes, why I did make kudos to your wife and son and to your husband.
No, I did not take it, I did not, I did not.
Because we rely on our family so often and they are sometimes forgotten in the thank yous and I think it's important to put that in there because either they do it or they're out of the house, but still, kudos, it was a huge help and especially your wife and your son running back and forth, you know, for the runs to Dunkin' Donuts. Just add in their names as well as Jan's husband's name who was there helping us throughout the whole event.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Appreciate it.
Mary?
Yep.
Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now we get to do the good things of the year. Trusty Garrick will do the presentation of the lighting award winners.
Okay, so we had three categories this year. It is best overall, so both daytime presentation was phenomenal and the evening presentation was phenomenal. And we had best evening presentation and then we had a best daytime presentation, but really was really great at night, too. So it wasn't really just a daytime presentation and that, it will go to Ken and Shirley Taylor. So they had best daytime presentation, but also your evening presentation was gorgeous. So very nice.
Thank you for that.
So you get to go to the movies when your husband's feeling better. So we thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
It was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our best evening goes to Robert Pulser. Congratulations. I didn't know it was your house, so it's a true fairy parfality. I have a new house on the left here, so it was really nice.
Great job.
And, you know, hands down Clarence and Sharon Pachra, I hope all of you got the opportunity to see, they make their decorations and every year they do something different and the horse and up, it was just, they win, I can't help it. They get the twenty-five dollar gift certificate to Price Chopper. And also a huge kudos to that entire street. They win for the largest number of families that participated in the decorating contest. As a matter of fact, there were only a couple that did not participate and one of those was abandoned. So, great, what's the word I want?
Village spirit.
Village spirit goes to Prospect Street. So congratulations to everybody, it was really exciting. It did create having to go out several times and going back and forth with different people to get opinions and votes and different lighting times to see, but it was great and it was great participation. So as usual, it was fun and nice job, Robert. It was really nice to come around that corner and see something on that street. It was really exciting.
I just thought I had a stalker.
Yeah, we went back and forth a few times there, so, but it was great, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job as usual.
It was fun.
Thank you. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period from four members of the community. As we have none, we'll move on. Have the report from Mike Tetro.
Oh, you have my report. It's winter time, it's pretty quiet, not much going on, just following up on a few things, few questions, complaints, that type of stuff. Anybody has any questions for me?
Yes, so we've mentioned it last month's meeting, you weren't here, but we were, a couple houses right down here, of course Patterson being one, I'm sure we'll get an update on that or not an update.
Yes.
And then the old apothecary that had a lot of broken windows in the corner building, anything to do with that?
No, I'm gonna be sending them a letter and the one on the corner of Main and Church, the old village office there, I guess. Yeah, the old Grange building.
Are we getting closer to the cameras that might help with, because obviously there's some vandalism going on down there, as more and more windows are getting popped out.
We're working with the engineers to get the security cameras put into the project.
Oh, okay.
And we'll have to buy some others ourselves, but I believe we'll have to contact...
We'll get the server in the project.
Yeah. We'll have to contact, is it Wells?
Well, it was on...
Is it who?
C H C.
N C C.
N C C, we'll have to contact them.
Too many letters there. You gotta read my office.
I was drawing a blank.
We'll have to contact them to see if that quote that they gave us a year or so ago is still valid. If not, they can update it, we'll present it to the engineers so that we can get that included as part of the project. On the other property, he was in and paid his water bill last week. I questioned him about what he was going to do, he had no, he had made no decisions up to that point, so I mentioned this to Mike and Mike called our attorney, made an appointment. Mike and I went down on Monday, spent some time with Mr. Manain and I think he came up with a workable solution. Do you want to explain it or...
Well, basically what we're going to do is address, first of all, we're gonna fence the building, we're gonna, the attorney's going to send him a letter requesting him to fence the entire property around. He can still have access to his building, but the property will be fenced with a fence similar to what went around Saint Mary's project. I didn't want any snow fence in there for protection.
Totally, and also that Mr. Manain was very reluctant to have the village put the fence up. He wants to put the onus on the property owner. And then as it is in the code, we can...
I mean, he's gonna send him a letter and the fence has gotta be up within thirty days. If he doesn't do it, then the village will do it and apply it to his taxes, but the property will be secure and then after that, we're gonna go after the different issues on the buildings that need to be addressed. If we went the other way to condemn it, it would cost the village a lot of money and you'd be quite a while before you could recoup it, at least three years, so you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars here to tear this place down. So this way here, you know, we have to push him to either fix it or tear it down, one or the other. I mean, if he wants to spend this time in court, that's his decision, but that's the route that we more or less discussed and that's what we're, what I plan to do.
I think that will be the most effective at this point. Putting the pressure on him to do this and then if he doesn't, well, we can, but we can put it on his taxes then, rather than us going out and just expending the money at first. I don't know if there was a recourse there. Have him do it if he chooses to, fine, if he chooses not to, then we can put the fence up and go from there.
And that'll give us the legal means of it as well.
Yeah, it's in the village code, so we can do that as unsafe property. That's where it's listed, right?
Correct, yes.
And the other two letters will go out for the other properties that are...
Yes.
I think there's probably one or two more that over the course of the next couple months, we need to get back at one that's been sitting there for a while. I think we need to go and see if we can get that property on Elm Street, or not Elm Street, but Seager Street, see if we can get that, something done with that one as well. It's an ice door, it's safe, I guess, it's boarded up somewhat, but I think we need to get some movement on that as well.
It does look like there's still an opening in the back. I know there's a new roof on it, but it does look like there's still an opening there.
We can check...
There's, you're talking about Mr. Delafair in this place? Yeah, there's a, I wanna say some sort of hole above the porch, but nobody can get in there. I mean, basically the doors are shut, the windows are shut, nothing can really get in and get out, or it would be an unsafe building.
Birds can't fly in there and...
Oh, yeah.
All that?
The birds can fly in, but I don't really know what I can really do with all that.
It's hard to condemn a property for just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You need some...
Well, they'll take care of it eventually.
Yeah.
That's what's happened here, is the birds have really done the damage on that corner building, the roof and gulf through it.
Yeah.
Any other building downtown? Mike, you made reference to eleven sixty-five Route Nine, where is that? The yellow building?
Oh, yeah, Ryan Dragoon has acquired that and I was, conversations with him, he wants to basically pick up where Mr. Trombley left off and renovate it and turn it into functional apartments, but I indicated to him that he has to go back through the zoning process because it's been so long with no activity that basically you have to start over again.
Are we talking about the whole building?
They were approved for four or five apartments in there at the time.
Yeah.
And he would have to do the same thing. Now whether or not they approved that many more, because there was an issue with parking, there's a vacant lot there that does not belong to them, and then on the other side there's another, a different building, and parking was a big issue. And so I don't know, he hasn't applied yet, he was weighing his options, so...
Maybe the woman who owns that vacant lot would be happy to finally get rid of it since they don't like to mow it anyway.
That person doesn't even live around here.
I know, but...
They haven't paid their going bill.
Well, what is he going to do regarding the foundation? Because those huge stones are starting to come right out.
Well, there was an engineering report that was done at the time Mr. Trombley wanted to repair it and all that was all itemized and that would be part of any building permit that's given. There's a lot of issues in that building, the plumbing, the heating, the electrical, basically it's a shell, but no heat in it and it's moving, so...
Oh, it's moving, those stones look like they've moved even more.
Oh, yeah, they have. So all that would have to be addressed and any sort of renovations that's done, so he has to figure out how much he, what's gonna cost him to do and is it worth it, you know?
Getting very close to an unsafe building.
Yeah.
If it's not worth it. Any further questions for Mike? Come on in.
What's the future tenant at the mall concerning sign regulations?
Over the Dollar Store was, getting another Dollar Store, Dollar Tree. They should be in between now and March from what they're telling me.
So something about the economy, doesn't it? Number of Dollar Stores.
Well, it's something.
Yeah.
See that, drugstores?
George wants open barber shop. Yep. It's his latest choice of career.
Cool. That would be wonderful, we could use that here.
He's looking to...
Wait, who's that?
George. There's no barber anywhere around him.
I know, it's really a need.
Okay, anything further from Mike? Do some raisin and raven then.
Okay, here we go.
You go, Mayor. You know the W?
Good evening and welcome to the first village board meeting of the new year. Two thousand sixteen promises to be a very exciting year here in the village. The major construction section of the water project will go out to bid soon for contractors to consider. Bid openings will occur in February and bid awards will be made shortly thereafter. Hopefully, when the frost finally leaves the ground this spring, construction can begin and we will experience the upheaval that a major construction project brings with it. Throughout the village and the town, there will be months of delays, street closures, traffic changes, so please be patient as improvements take time and causes some discomfort. Please remember that at the completion of the project, we will have better water pressure, a softer water product, and a much more efficient water system for both the village and the town. This project will provide incentive for economic growth in the region, for new businesses, current business expansion, and increased fire protection. This shared water project will also put the village in a position to expand into other areas in the future if the occasion arises. Smile on that one. With improvements comes an increased cost of doing business. When we upgrade our cell phones, there are increased costs. When we purchase a new vehicle or a new home, there are increased costs that must be addressed. Water is an essential. We need it to drink, cook our food, bathe, wash our cars, water our gardens. This project will be costly, but the needed improvements will outdistance the added financial payout. The village's share of the project improvements is about twenty-five percent of the total cost. This percentage is for the improvements within the village, paid for by village users and amounts to approximately fifty-seven thousand one hundred dollars that will be due for payment on January eighth, two thousand seventeen, and every following January for the next twenty-nine years. The current water rates, which have not had an adjustment in the past five years, will have to be increased from two ninety-eight a thousand gallons to approximately four fifty for a thousand gallons, beginning with the April first billing. This increase is necessary for debt repayment. The average consumer who is using ten thousand K gal per quarter will see an increase of fifteen dollars per quarter. This increase can be reduced a bit by the village board adjusting the service charges. This is a sizable rate increase and your village board will spend the next two months looking for ways to soften the blow. As a reminder, the village board recently reduced the wastewater rates by twenty percent, so the impact of a water rate increase will be minimal for the village users. Your patience and understanding will be greatly appreciated as we work our way through this water service improvement project. More information on this matter will be presented to our water users over the next couple months. We will certainly keep you informed. To the board, budget preparation for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget year will begin soon. Our financial situation currently is very good and I anticipate that next year's budget will maintain our forward movement and good financial standing. Labor negotiations will also need to be addressed soon as the current contract will expire in June of this year. And I will have a preliminary budget for you hopefully by February's meeting and we can schedule some adjustment meetings after that, as we do most years. I would also like to congratulate the lighting contest winners. The village really looked very festive due to the efforts of our residents and kept the spirit of the holidays at a very high point, much to the enjoyment of all residents and visitors in our village. It is through these efforts that make this village a great place to live and enjoy. Even I had some lights, did you notice?
Yes.
Yeah, because your grandkids were coming.
That's it, my granddaughter was coming, so I put lights up for her. Thank you.
They look, it's all that matters.
Thank you very much.
Church Street appreciates.
Yeah. Trusty Garrick, we'll start with you.
So we have not gotten the answers back from the library with all the holidays and everything, so Mary and I had talked about it this past weekend and we will have answers on that whole list of things, the wanted demographics and all of that, so we will get together with them at this point.
It's about the right time with budget year and stuff like that, but it's not gonna, I can't see this happening this year.
No, no.
You know?
And I don't think that's, they're anticipating that this year. But I would like to have our ducks in the row as early as possible, whether this is gonna be feasible or not.
Yep.
That's it, and then just congratulations again on all the decorating and all the wonderful activities that did take place in the village.
It was a good year.
Lots of great feedback from everybody, the lines, you know, the tree lighting, we talked about the last meeting, but for those of you who didn't tune into the last meeting, it was just great, it was such a huge incredible turnout and to hear people talk about it and say, what are you guys giving away down there? Yeah, there were so many people and it was just, it was really exciting and people are very pleased and, you know, Jan, all the wonderful things that you and your husband have done with that meeting house, great feedback. My husband was hearing from several people since he's come back and, oh, wait till you go to the meeting house and this and that and, you know, my wife goes there for this and we polish off a bottle of wine while we're doing this and that.
Should be saying that.
So, you know, it's great and it's a great place.
That's paint and zip, that's it.
That's right, paint and zip. So that you can really truly enjoy your painting afterwards, but it's nice, you know, and people are enjoying that and it's something for our locals to go to and enjoy without having to drive to Plattsburg to do something. And it's neighbors, it's friends, it's, I just, kudos to you and your husband, I can't thank you enough for the incredible gift you have given to us, to many of the residents, and it's so greatly, greatly appreciated.
Thanks.
So thank you.
Thank you. Trusty Trombley?
Again, I also wanna reiterate, congratulations to all the contest winners and thank you to everybody who decorated the village, decorated it nice. And thanks to the village crew, for, I know we've only had one major storm, but not only did you do a great job, it was, it's all the papers and in comparison, it's pretty, it's pretty remarkable that a four-man crew pull off what you pull off.
Sidewalks and all.
Sidewalks and all.
Yeah, accessibility.
Pick that city up, I swear.
I didn't wanna say that, but yeah, I mean, when you're talking, when you're comparing to a thirty-three man crew and they can't get it done, it's pretty remarkable, so, kudos.
We did some landscaping, dude, a long way.
It happens.
The first one's always hard.
Yeah, but this year we've got no frost whatsoever and there's damage everywhere.
I know, I planted potatoes in my house, even my backyard took a beating.
The personal snow piles were doing the same thing in the driveways, too, though, because they couldn't see the driveways and I just was watching a sob was being torn up as they pulled into people's car.
It looks worse, too, when it's laid out and caught in the snow.
I know.
Once the snow goes, it doesn't look quite as bad.
Lay it back down.
But it's true, and now we had this melt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, but...
It's all mine.
But I know people here in the village really appreciate what you guys do, so thanks.
Thank you. Trusty McFetrich?
Well, I'd like to start by thanking all of those who participated in the wreath contest also. We had a great turnout for that, I think it were eighteen or fourteen wreaths. Cheryl Nadrowski and Lori Ketterer were the winners and Natalie Brey took second and Meryl Freeman was third. And then after that, we had, we had a nice little group that went Christmas caroling around the village and we had a good time doing that. We had a huge turnout for Champlain on the Move last, or January first. I think there were about thirty people who showed up to walk around the village and start the new year off right, we had different distances. There's great interest in this, so I'm going to try to turn it into a, once or twice a month have an outing, so if we get some snow, we'll do some snow shilling or cross-country skiing or something. We enjoyed hot chocolate after and that was very, very positive. Couple of events coming up. Tomorrow is Erin Merrill's presentation about religion, that's at six thirty at the meeting house.
How long is that expected to go?
I asked him to speak about forty-five minutes.
Okay.
That, the next one in that series of lectures is called Life on and Off Broadway and that's Marilyn Reynolds and Roger Andrews who live in Rouse's Point now, but they both performed on Broadway, they're going to talk about their experiences. Also that, the author series has really taken off, I don't know if you know David Minett, but he spoke last week and had, we had a nice turnout for that. And Gordy Little is going to come in March to speak at the meeting house. And the only other thing is the Champlain Kids Connected, the next children's activity will be February fifth, that's a Friday, that's the story hour, will be on Friday the fifth at six thirty. And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
What did the wreaths look like that won? The names I didn't know, they, all around the window?
Oh, they were so creative.
Some of them are.
They were so creative.
Well, no, I saw them, I just was curious which ones the ones that won. I don't know how.
Cheryl's was the one with the Santa Claus and had the stove in the middle of it?
Yes.
Oh, that was cute.
I think that's still here, I think that's the one that's over in front of the office window.
No, I think that's the telephone company one. With the corkscrew.
It's still here, I think.
It's right here, I believe.
Okay, cool. There's so many, they were so good.
Oh, they were so creative.
It was great.
Yeah.
It's good.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Everyone's got the dates?
No, so, yeah, thank you, the life on Broadway, you said it was February, what's the date of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, February tenth. I don't think I said that, yeah, that's the ten.
And the March?
The March one, I don't have the date yet.
Okay, that's with Gordy Little.
Very good, thank you. Trusty Trombley?
Again, the village, I don't remember a year where I've seen so many decorations in the village.
This was warm.
This is true.
It was safe to get on the roof.
This is true.
That's probably part of it, yeah.
But the village did look beautiful and I think that it just shows a huge camaraderie in the village that people are getting out and doing more and I think it says a lot for our small municipality. Looking forward to starting the budget process and I'm gonna say it in advance, to the girls, Mary and Juanita, and to Greg, the hours that you guys put in ahead of time before we even see a preliminary, thank you ahead of time because you make the process a lot easier for the rest of us. Union negotiations, I was just thinking about that today, it doesn't seem like it's been three years, but I expect that to be a pretty seamless process as it was last time. So, other than that, and congratulations to the contest winners.
Okay, thank you. Our treasurer, you're on.
Everyone has the December expense and revenue report and I did some figuring and everything looks up as on target. We were through transfers to do, but... We also had a water and sewer billing. Our water was forty-eight thousand three eighty-five eighty-two. And sewer was sixty-five thousand seven twenty-three fifty-six. And those figures are pretty much on target, too, with our budget. And then the other thing is transfers, I don't know if you want to approve the one first or you want to do the transfers first?
I think do the transfers.
Okay, the transfers, first of all is that we had a workers comp figure that we negotiated last month, a little above our budget, so both were the first three, A, F, and G, we had to transfer a small amount. We have enough in our hospital and medical expense, so I transferred out of those funds. The next is eight fifty-one ten point two, the street maintenance equipment, thirty thousand three twenty-nine, that's to cover the cost of our new pickup truck. Eight fifty-one forty-two point two is the cost of our five thousand dollars for the new plow. And eight forty-nine, eight fourteen ninety point two, Public Works, nine hundred and thirty-nine thirty-three is for Mike's cell phone and his one year of service. And all, that's gonna come out of fund balance for a total of thirty-six thousand two sixty-eight thirty-three.
Need a motion to approve this transfer?
So moved?
For the second?
Second.
Discussion?
And that is for all three of them, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Any discussion on this? A little call please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee McFettrich?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, presentation warrant?
And that, we have invoices that we had to add on. Um, the total additional invoices are nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents for a total warrant of fifty-two thousand, six twenty-two, sixteen.
Okay. Um, the Halbert Brothers was added today, uh, as an emergency purchase. We had one lift station, both, both of the motors, uh, died on the lift station on Ashland Drive. Both of those, um, have to be replaced. So, that's the, uh, that's the two Halbert Brothers emergency purchases there.
What's the Bogard equipment and the Howard Becker?
Bogard is oil and filters for our backhoe service.
And Howard Becker is for our check writer.
Oh, is that the?
That's in the closet, that would write our, our C.
The closet writer?
Yeah.
Top it, is that, is that an annual charge, a quarterly charge?
Annual.
Okay.
I don't know, we thought we might discuss that about how much checks, how many checks do we really handwrite and use? Um, whether it's worth it to weigh the options of whether it's worth it to keep that or just type them on the typewriter?
What are the benefits? Are there any benefits to keeping it?
How many checks do you do?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is how much checks do we really, we really write, you know? We do them for payroll and I do them for the insurance, basically, that's, that's about it. So, I, I'm thinking maybe...
It's pretty pricey, payroll checks.
Well, you know, I just print your numbers on your checks, you know, write notes to Champlain. I don't know whether that's really...
I don't think it's all that necessary when you write them in anyway.
Yeah, I'm not.
Maybe we should just do away with this. Could we do that?
Oh, we had that.
It was here when I got here.
Came across and made law.
It's better that law.
Instead of an abacus, they had the check writer.
Did we already pay that yearly charge though?
No, we have not. He just, he just mailed us, he just faxed us that invoice. Um, but I was discussing with Mary, I said, "Is it for the amount of checks that we, hand checks that we do, do?"
Doesn't sound like it's worth it.
If you don't mind handwriting them, I'm all for eliminating.
I know, I just go on, got on the typewriter and I typed the amount out.
Yeah, I'm fine with getting rid of that.
And that'd be, that'd be fine with payroll as well?
Everything, everything else comes off the computer. The, the, the payroll checks come off the computer.
Oh, I thought you just used...
No, 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 just like the checks that I write for Aflac or, um...
Oh, yeah, I, I...
Or the Woody's, you know?
I thought you, I misunderstood.
For the credit union, those are the checks that I handwrite, that's it. And the insurance checks. Every other check comes off the computer.
So, that does make the checks kind of expensive one year, looking at two hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
It used to be two years.
Now it's one year.
Now it's one year.
I'm, I'm fine with getting rid of that. You guys are good with that.
That's all that matters.
Hey, there's two hundred and sixty dollars! Out of the budget!
It's already gone.
That's in our budget.
Yeah, no. Your, your spending is going to be like, reeled in tight. Tight.
These hardware is going to complain over the next budget.
Yeah. Okay, so, are we going to eliminate that? Take that out?
Let's just delete that.
Minus the two fifty-nine, fifty.
Ninety-sixty-four, which makes it...
So, that brings the warrant down to?
So, four thirty-one.
Three sixty-two, sixty-six.
What is it? Fifty-two?
Fifty-two, three sixty-two, sixty-six.
Three sixty-two, sixty-six. Okay. Is there any other discussion on the warrant?
We haven't motioned yet, so I didn't discuss yet.
Okay, so the motion to approve the warrant?
I've, I've made a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices for a total of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-six.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss.
Okay, um, I had a question. Um, James has got more work pants again already? Is there something with the quality of the pants here?
Yeah, robbers, robbers have been ordering two and had orders on two, yeah, they had like six pair, there's not, they, the guys are wearing their own pants, their pants are just worn out.
It's been over a year, yeah.
It's been over a year since the new uniforms?
Yeah. Shirts are okay for all of us, but the pants are, mine were like cheesecloth some, a lot of them ripped out. Um, I had them on the back and, uh, had, they've been in there for, and ended up, I showed it, my, checked them all. They got like six pair. I know that Jimmy had, Jimmy's been out for a little while, he hadn't, hadn't been wearing his own, so...
So, do we need to look at a better quality pants?
They just, they get used, I mean, they're...
Yeah, this guy's work up there.
I think we found, is it, is it better quality?
Yes, and we'll see how they wear, he's, that's what he's been wearing, he bought some, uh, prison blues or some different brand or US-made, they're a little bit more than, maybe ten dollars a pair more or something, but that's what he had and he's been wearing and he seems to like them. So, probably going to give it a repair because they were the same size. They can try and see, the original one we bought, we bought some of our double front, double line.
Oh, yeah.
And they, that didn't work because if it was not enough gimp, then the crotch would rip out of them. So, we had a couple of those and a couple of the regular.
You may want to look at Duluth trading?
Yeah, they're expensive, but like the fire hose jeans.
They're expensive, the fire hose and they've got the built-in...
Yeah.
Extra bend in them, uh, so you don't blow out the crotch every other day.
You guys need to go try it.
Um, you know, plus they've got a nice warranty on it, it's made off fire hose. Um, and I have to tell you, my son who blows through pants, because he does, you know, loads trucks and everything, he hasn't blown through these pants and he's had them for a year and a half now. You watch for the sales, they run promos every now and then and that's when you order, but, yeah, like seventy dollars a pair, but when you're replacing these others, if they're not...
Well, it's too fair because I think the other ones were around thirty.
Right.
I think it's the one? I did.
So, just a thought.
Also, the, um, they paid the extra, they paid the extra over allotted amount?
Yes.
Jimmy paid the extra?
They're only about two hundred.
Right.
And it was, ended up being more than, so he was, he paid it anyway, but, I, I knew ahead of time, it was only that much, up to that much. So, if he wanted to buy the better pants, he wanted to pay the difference, it was to him, I mean, and he did, he wanted to, so...
What is this Walmart community, RFC, SLLC? I'm assuming the pick?
That's the credit card, that's the credit card.
Oh, it's just the credit card?
That's the credit, okay.
Um, so, why, why are we getting diesel oil and degreaser from Walmart?
It's less money.
Really?
Uh, like a two-and-a-half gallon jug of degreaser.
Uh-huh.
Uh, our synthetic oil for trucks to service vehicles is almost half of what it is locally.
Beautiful, okay.
So, I don't get there often, I went to Walmart, went to Sam's, so there's a couple big ones, but it's for, we can service all the vehicles, cheaper when you buy it in bulk there than it is to buy it close by.
And, um, the only blue ice I know is an alcoholic beverage, what is blue ice?
Uh, oh, that's a, that's a four-pack of, of air fresheners, one for each of the vehicles out there.
This is blue ice.
Well, whatever it is, I think that's what it is.
Air freshener.
Yeah, there's a four, there's a three or four pack, that's going to be what it was.
Okay.
There's a little black Christmas tree there, any of the vehicles.
I just, I was just curious.
There's no alcohol in the, other than dry gas. I think there's a four-pack of isopropyl dry gas in there, but...
Yeah.
That's the only, I don't know, I'm going to...
And, and this touchpad for Prescott is after the water tower?
Touchpads?
Then, touchpad?
No, that'd be for our water meters.
The water meters, oh, just the water meter, okay. That's all my questions.
Can I have your own, sir?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Do a little call please?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrick?
Aye.
Mayor Martin? I'm trying to just...
I kept opening my mouth.
Bing, 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 bing!
I...
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Wow, I'm glad I was on the ball. I almost said "I" for "you."
We're all quick, Deb, everybody under a time.
We're doing a lot.
Funny.
Okay, uh, before we be, before we begin, now we'll do this under new business, I guess. Okay? Mike, you're on.
I'm awesome right now. I'm trying to think what else to buy since it's under new business.
You're right, it's busy.
Well, uh, we have been staying rather busy, the weather has, was good, um, but it seems like the snow seems to come in the weekends. Um, I did receive a few, uh, few after-hours calls, one of whom, um, I don't know, two o'clock in the morning, I guess I got a call from state police, uh, St. Mary's thought their sewer was backed up, a rectory, so I came in and it ended up, um, it was, it was a lot of groundwater and their, their own personal sewer line was plugged and their sun pump was hooked to it. So, it was recycling back, unfortunately flooded the place and since then it's been, the next day actually, it was dug, we cut into the VI out front and that's been, uh, that's been fixed, so the sun pump's going outside now. Um, the other one was, last week I received a call from the state police and, uh, we had a hydrant that got hit over the pocket Boulevard. So, I came in, um, hydrant is broke, has to be dug, uh, we removed the top of it, covered it over for now, but, uh, this week, uh, I should be getting quotes to have it replaced, uh, to submit to the insurance company of the person that hit it, um, so we can get a new hydrant in there.
They stopped?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for stopping and recording it.
Well, I don't know if they stopped, maybe they didn't hit any of the towed off of it, but...
They couldn't stop seeing that.
Yeah.
Well, like our tree downtown, you know, the things people don't hang around, or the one up here on the corner, remember?
Unfortunately, the, this fellow that hit it had bored his buddy's car, he was going to pick him up from work and he smashed his buddy's car and insurance is somebody else's name, so it was a mess, but that's, whatever, that's up to them and, but they did give me the, police called me and I got the copy of their police report for the insurance so that way we can, um, we can get quotes, get it replaced and, um, the insurance should take care of it. Um, we're, we, well, we were, I don't know, we'll see this week, uh, goes, we were still putting culverts and doing a little ditching, um, we haven't got to it for like a week, it's, well, actually probably a little before Christmas, uh, we'll see how the ground is. I'd like to move up on Moore Street, I'd like to get a few more in, but if we do great, if not, we'll get back at them at spring, at the springtime. Um, we did start taking, the guys started taking decorations down, but most of all when we're down in the park, I do have to get around with a bucket truck and, uh, finish removing the ones on the poles and then get them put away for this year. We had a water main break over on Elm Street, um, next to the end of Walnut Street. Uh, we were able to fix it rather quickly, uh, we did do it under pressure, but we did oil, uh, did issue a boil water notice, uh, there was a few residents, I don't know, five, six residents, maybe seven affected, um, so we did do a boil water, unfortunately it was during the holiday and, uh, it, it got dragged out a little because there's no regular labs to run the samples, so, since then, samples were taken, um, everything came back good and the, the boil water was lifted, so, uh, we also learned that we had a six-inch line there and our map showed that we had an eight-inch, so, we found out moving that.
Hmm.
Um, we done the service line up on, um, up on Moore Street, there was a fellow bought a house that had been abandoned or whatnot, um, and they're remodeling it, so we went up, he wanted us to turn the water on for him. We went up to turn it on and unfortunately the shut-off was both broken off and it drowned, so we had to dig it and change the shut-off under, under full line pressure, which we took care of, but while we were there digging it to fix it, we found a, a boulder on top of the, on top of the shut-off, on, on top of the line, I don't know if it's got bored, but it was big enough we had to push it to the lower bucket, couldn't pick it up with a backhoe. Pulled it out of the hole and it had to roll it to the lower bucket, it was that big, you know, even near the wall, I don't know why, but, uh, either contractors did it and left it because they didn't want to fool with it or they bored it and, I don't know, but, anyways, we took care of that, moved it out of the way and, uh, and, uh, got it fixed up. Um, also, we went over to St. Mary's, uh, end of last week, uh, contractors were over there, um, they're all finished with their asbestos and whatnot, uh, they were putting sand on top to level the ground and, uh, they got ahold of me, they had dug for me and I removed the water, the rods and the curb boxes for the old water services at St. Mary's, so, the lines are still buried and I did shoot them with GPS so I know where they are, we already had to get to them for some reason, but we removed them so that there was no way for anybody to turn the water on, on those lines that were left. Um, I know they leveled it off and they put like forty loads, ten loads of sand on top, they're supposed to come back in the spring, uh, probably add a few more because some of them will probably settle and then I think you're going to topsoil and seed it and then everything will be finished up over there. Um, other than that, we did, uh, we did, you know, a few oddball repairs, uh, trackless, the clutch, signal noise went for the clutch and the sander, we had to get some of them in, uh, a couple lift station pumps went, lights in the sanders, just oddball stuff. Um, but it has been, uh, has been relatively busy between that and, uh, I know Greg and Jan have been here a lot with, uh, trying to get this water project finished up, trying to catch all the, the little details. Um, that would have been, time to sue me.
You've spent a lot of time on this thing.
You've spent a ton of time.
And a lot of the things that are going to be changed, because the contractors have missed it, a lot of the things that are going to be addressed on this water project is because he caught them. And I don't know if the contractors like us, whether to call him or not, but a lot of the things that should have been taken care of, Mike caught and, um, have told the contractors that this is what we want and we want to have it done, so...
Just going to make sure that, it's hard, it's such a big project though, never going to catch everything, but the more we can catch now, getting cleared out before it comes to the head at the end, and there's going to be enough at the end, I'm sure that, that we have to change or whatever, but, uh, it, it's tough, the more sets of eyes you look at, the better it is, there's no doubt, um, and, and for everybody to understand or have an idea how it, how it works, but, um, other than that, we did our new pickup cave-in, plows on it and, uh, started to use that, so, I, I wanted to get a couple, uh, requests and I didn't get it, just been, been rather busy the last two weeks here, but probably for next meeting I'll have, I wanted to do a, a couple purchase order requests for, uh, seat covers and I need some post fittings for, uh, our big three-inch discharge hoses for our pumps and I didn't get a chance to look them up and so, I'll look at that next time. Other than that, that's all I have for my report.
Questions for the superintendent?
Nope, just thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks for letting me.
And then some busy.
Correspondence, we put in county health department regarding boil water order for Elm Street and a JCEO monthly report.
I can see she's busy. I can see she's busy. JCEO, seems like that number of services, that number goes up. Comments on the correspondence? Okay, old business, we've, Amy's told us about the library. Made the call today for the plaques on the playground. What did Mr. Bayshard have to say about that?
Um, the report of $187. Six five point three sign and that includes, um, direct hack. Which is part of what Martin does, Martin Bayshard does.
Any idea of completion date?
We need to let him know that we want them to do it. That's just the quote.
What was the quote again?
Four eighty-seven.
Total, everything? Four eighty-seven?
And that's gonna come out of the playground. We have money.
Do we need a, do we need a?
No, you can have a.
Need to vote on that? Okay. Is everyone okay with this?
Yes.
Amy, yes?
Yeah.
We can call him too.
Okay. Any other old business come before the board? Okay, new business, we've done the decorating contest, winter presentation. We need to do a resolution of polling place. Is everyone, everyone's copied with this? Okay, we're using the record. Resolution of polling place in time 2016 elections Village of Champlain. Whereas the next village election for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York will be held on March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen and whereas the Board of Trustees at said village must designate by resolution the polling place and hours which polls shall be open per section fifteen dash one oh four dash three B of the State of New York election law. Then be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain office, eleven oh four Route nine, Champlain, New York. With the polls being open from noon to nine PM and be it further resolved that as required by section fourteen dash one oh four dash three B of the State election law, notice of said village polling place and time the polls will be open be given at least sixty days prior to said election date. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The foregoing question was duly put on a roll call, or two-year roll call vote on January eleventh, two thousand sixteen after a motion made by trustee Tremblay and seconded by trustee Tremblay and accepted the resolution as presented, which resulted as follows. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A little correction, you said section fourteen, it's section fifteen.
Oh, sorry.
Not that makes a big difference, but the official here.
I gotta wait for my, I'll have to catch up with my eyes.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I don't know if it makes a difference, so.
Also, under new business, you should have a resolution of standardization on, of service brass for the Village of Town of Champlain shared water, shared services water project. Uh, this is in addition to a previous standardization with the, um, service brass from AY McDonald and we needed to add the items that are listed here. If you get valves from one company and you get a meter horn from another company, they don't always match up and they don't always tighten, so they have a tendency to leak. So, we decided that we would add this standardization to the project. We were dealing with, uh, service brass from AY McDonald, that is what we have been using for a period of time and that's to keep the inventory and to keep the, uh, to keep the project in line with our products, we would standardize with this. Whereas the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain through a shared water, shared services water project presently use and will continue to use specific service brass, non-leaded and for reasons of efficiency and economy have standardized all service brass throughout the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain. And whereas the standardization promotes efficiency and saves money, since maintenance work on the same type of service brass will require less labor and economy will be promoted through the purchase of multiple service brass items and through the use of repair parts common to existing service brass avoiding the need for investment in additional shelf stock. And whereas the standardization of service brass, non-leaded by AY McDonald does not eliminate the need for the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain to solicit bids to obtain the lowest responsible bidders to supply the following items currently used by the village and to be incorporated into the shared services water project. All items incidental to the installation of water meters will be standardized to those manufactured by AY McDonald to include but not limited to one, water meters, K horn, two, meter valves, three, meter couplings, four, check valves, five, meter pits. In evaluating bits and middles, warranty coverage will be considered and whereas the Village of Champlain Board and the Town of Champlain Board have carefully studied and reviewed the recommendations of the Superintendent of Public Works for the Village of Champlain, therefore be it resolved for the reasons of efficiency and economy and pursuant to the authority conferred by subdivision five of section one oh three of the general municipal law, it is determined by the Village of Champlain Board and the Town of Champlain Board that there is a need for standardization and the Boards do hereby continue the standardization of all service brass purchased for this shared service water project by the town, by the Village of Champlain and the Town of Champlain to be service brass by AY McDonald to include but not limited to one, meter horns, or meter setters, K horn, two, meter valves, three, meter couplings, four, check valves, five, meter pits. And I know I erroneously said number one in the previous, uh, it is meter setters, K horn. This is just to increase our efficiency and it also will keep us from having to have shelves of, of material in the back to, for replacements, different kinds of valves and stuff like that, so. And as the changeover continues, uh, all of the new meters that will be put in, we will be using this material to install those meters. And have we talked about installing those meters?
Yeah, well, we did.
That we will install the meters?
Yes, last month we did, I believe.
Okay, that we will install the meters at a, I think, a significant savings, you know, for the project, so that we can.
We'll, we'll replace existing. As far as new, it'll be the project, new meter pits, not new penetration, but we'll, we'll be replacing the existing.
We're not gonna replace the ones where we have to go through a wall. Just the ones that are existing now.
When you replace the, the new meters, are removing the, uh, remote readers on the outside of all the buildings? Or is that?
There's still gonna be, there's still gonna be, we're gonna, we're gonna put the new wire, there's still gonna be a reader on the outside.
Oh, there will be.
And there's gonna be actually a box clipped over the top. That's the, the vehicle-based reader.
Oh, that's where it gets the signal from?
Yeah. A meter pits, it's gonna go in the pit lid. So, that way there'll be, won't be a wire sticking up with a pad, but all the homes that have the reader, there's a, like a four by five square that snaps over the top of that. And as a remote read, a radio reader will go right to our vehicle-based reader, so we pick it up off of that.
And what did you do to determine this company?
Uh, this is what we've been carrying well since I've been here. The biggest thing is, there was, when I, well, when I first got here, there was Ford, Mueller, AY McDonald. Uh, when you take the fittings, the, the, there's rubber uh, where the ceiling surface is and the nuts, they don't interchange, so if you have one and use the wrong rubber or a wrong nut, you can tighten it all the way tight where it's bottomed out and the line will blow off, you'll still have leaks. So, they don't interchange with each other. So, that's a problem. Otherwise, you gotta carry two or three types of each item, which, we've got it in a toolbox now that you, it's pretty heavy. You're carrying three times as much because you don't know what you need. You know, if we have a, if it's, if that's what it is, we can change the rubber. If not, a lot of the old fittings, once you take them off, you can't use them anyways, you have to switch because everything's non-led now. That's the law. So, if there's something attached inside the property, we can fasten to it. If that's taken out for any reason, we can't put it back because it's, everything's non-led. You can't even sell them on, uh, anything that has lead for probably water in that. Everything's going that way. We're, I'm working on right now, looking at fittings for all, uh, where we need them in our meter pits, because most of the meter pits we have in the village are a fifty-inch diameter pit. Anything new that we'll be putting in will probably be eighteen or twenty-one because we have to put where the meters are now, have to take the meter out and I have to re-pipe it. It's gonna be a pressure reducer and make fittings to put the meter pit, uh, to put the meter back in, so there's gonna be multiple and a check valve, so people's lines can't drain back into our main line. That's what we're, we're trying to configure now because our pits, they're not made for fifteen-inch diameter pits and we're not gonna go through and change every pit at a couple thousand dollars apiece.
Right.
So, uh, that's what I'm working on now is configuring piping that we can use actually in our pits. The ones that are here, that'll, that'll work for us. We'll have to build it, but once we know exactly what we need, then we can, you know. I don't know how many there'll be, I'm working on that actually this afternoon, I talked to the engineer about the pressures. Uh, we're not really agreeing, we weren't really in agreement with the pressures we're gonna be, or I thought they were a little high, so that's what we're working on now. Because we have to put pressure reducers in for people. Don't worry that some of the pressures they wanna run might be higher than what, uh, some of the places can take.
What a home, what a home can take?
Yeah, I mean, in the bowl, it'll be ninety pounds. So, we're, I'm looking to get them down at least in the seventy, at least a seventy.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I thought when we originally discussed that, that it would be.
Everything was set at ninety, which, um, I, I shouldn't say that, anything inside that bowl was ninety going in. They're gonna, now they're gonna be regulating, they're all gonna be coming out because they're settable at fifty-five. So, anything coming out, for anything like next door down in that, where they're putting their main reducers, will be at fifty-five, but like here, we're not in that. So, here it goes by elevation, we were gonna be at ninety. So, we're gonna have to be putting, um, most of your pressure relief valves are adjustable, they can preset at fifty pounds and they're adjustable from twenty-five to seventy-five. So, we're gonna probably look at, I'm working with him right now and that, we're gonna probably look at them, set them around seventy. To get down enough, um, where it's, you know, we don't wanna be over-pressurizing in homes. Some of the plumbing in the village here can't take.
No, it's the things, it's the same pressures like.
And then we'll have to see in a case-by-case spaces, um, for pressure relief valves. Because once we put a check valve, where the people's homes can't backflow into the main, which should be, you have thermal expansion reading hot water tanks and boilers, it's gotta go somewhere. So, we may, we may have a few cases, we might have to put a pressure relief valve inside that can dump off and let that little bit of pressure or an expansion tank. We'll have to look at that as it gets closer.
We would put that where the meter is?
In the line, on the inside of the home.
Yeah, where the meter is?
On, between the meter and the inside of the home, yeah. Because if we put a check valve, where nothing can flow back, um, that's a single check, that pressure, if you get thermal expansion on the inside, it has to go somewhere. So, depending, um, the engineers did the last project we did, they only had a few, but I really don't wanna find out with, you know, how people's hot water tanks blowing up or I'd like to try to get that, get it straightened out ahead of time.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what we're, that's what we're looking at, to get the pressures down a little bit. Because originally the numbers we're looking at is ninety pounds, ninety pounds is a lot of, they don't really recommend over eighty. Uh, your, your, a lot of your stuff, your dishwasher, washing machines, and that, the valves, at eighty pounds, they have a leak and fail, so. By the time we're done, I don't know, maybe we'll be down in the high sixties, but it'll still be more than what they have now, there's no doubt.
Well, yeah, I.
Depending where you are.
Forty's a bit more than we have now.
Well, like right here, the office here, we're in the sixty-pound range.
Are you?
So, just depending where you are.
I'm not that high, Ryan.
Down on River Street, we're, uh, I thought, man, I don't remember, but we're probably in the seventies at least. Yeah, it's got good pressure down there. But you get, get up on Prospect and you got.
We're thirty, well, we're thirty.
It'll be better soon. Okay, need a motion to approve this resolution? Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty Garrick?
Aye.
We have heard.
Aye.
Good job.
Okay, I'll deliver this to the town tomorrow morning. And, um, they can approve it at their meeting tomorrow evening and we can get this off to the engineers so that they can work this into their plans. All right, um. One more order of, uh, under new business. I've asked Juanita to check on the possibilities of a village credit card through one of our banks. It is, we have a tendency to go out, and I know I've done it, Mike's done it a number of times. We have a tendency to go out and go to the stores and to purchase things and put them on our own account. I believe that the comptroller's office is going to find that, um, we shouldn't be doing that.
That's not good practice.
No, it's not.
So, that way, I mean, we don't have to set a very high limit. Maybe fifteen hundred or something of that nature, so that if Mike needs to go to Walmart or goes to Lowe's or goes to whatever or somebody goes on a, on a, on a, um, to go to a conference in Lake Placid or whatever, you know, for gas and for meals and for stuff like that. It's, to me, it's very difficult for us to have to go pay for something and then present a bill to the village and then the village pay us. I think it would be more efficient and I think it would be more agreeable by the comptroller's office if we just had a, um, a credit card with a small, with a small limit on it so that we can handle these purchases a little more directly, rather than having to go through this process like we do. To me, it's just a very inefficient system that we have right now to deal with this credit card issue. So, I've, I've asked Juanita to, uh, to look at the banks where we have our fund balances saved and see what kind of deal, and obviously, we don't wanna pay all these charges and stuff like that, we just want something that is, uh, that is for us to use, to keep the balance, you know, I mean, to keep a balance low. We don't need, as I said, a whole lot of money, but just so it makes everything more efficient, just so that. So, I would entertain a resolution, if you, if you desire, I'd entertain a resolution and an amount that we can, uh, explore our opportunities with the banks, the local banks with. I would recommend a, a balance of about fifteen hundred dollars and then we can keep track of the spending much easier that way.
I make a motion that, um, Juanita find, um, one of our local financial institutions and a credit card with a limit of, at fifteen hundred dollars.
Have a second to?
No fees.
Yeah, no fees, yeah, we shouldn't, we have enough money in those banks, so we shouldn't be paying fees.
There's so many out there that have no fees.
Yeah, okay, we have a motion of fifteen hundred, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, uh, any further discussion on this? You know the parameters, Juanita? Any further discussion here?
No, I will need to add, to it or not, that if, they won't do a little, a little limit like that. They'll need to make it more flexible so we can.
Well, they will, they'll say whatever you want.
They will say it?
Yeah, I think so.
They'll, they'll want to go higher.
Well, yeah, sure.
They'll probably automatically send you higher.
Yeah.
But the thing is, you know, whatever we need to go and purchase, it'll be paid off in thirty days anyway, so it's not like it's.
So, all these places you have set up that you shop, you have it set up for tax exemption?
Yeah, and a lot of times if, uh, if you buy anything online, because a lot of times it's so much cheaper.
Yeah.
Most of the, most of them aren't taxed because it has a state. Like the phone, I did, I paid for it, I had to pay the tax, but they called me last Friday and they didn't refund me the tax and canceled my phone at the same time, so. Had to call this morning, my phone got shut off. I had to pay for another year, so anyways, it's paid through, I thought right now it's paid through January tenth of twenty seventeen, so.
Okay, need a roll call on this?
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich?
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay?
Aye.
Trusty Garrick?
Yeah, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
We know you're here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening to what he's saying and processing.
Okay, if there's no further business.
Please, it's not November anymore.
Come before the board, take a motion, do a adjourn.
It's almost.
Have a second?